So we just need.
That's it, yeah.
I won't be here for the June one though. We're going to Florida.
Oh, we're going for a lot of days.
Oh, yeah.
We're going there. Um, every year we go to Fort Myers. But I, it was usually by the floor.
Well, by fire, by the fire.
Oh, yeah. But me and my girlfriends went to Fort Myers once.
They had so much fun.
It's just a girl's trip.
It's gonna be a family trip. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
That's nice. I just got back from my honeymoon.
You did?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Because we did like be alone to Florida. We did in Sanibel Islands, so.
I was like, that's not a honeymoon. So I was able to sneak out.
Another day.
That is so freaking cool.
Any of those?
That's what I just said. Uh.
I think we're switching back to pain. To, uh, I mean, you could say however you want, but. Karen's gonna put you over on the outside, I think.
Hey, yes, he's going to his treatments.
Oh, yeah. I know he was sick, I just wanted.
Legal ever showed up.
Between Rick and Tom.
So. No.
How's that? How are you? Not too bad.
Hello.
Yeah. So old Mike issue.
Jim, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we can begin.
Okay. This is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decisions of the board is final in respect that it does not go to the mayor or the city council for further actions. However, if you disagree with our decision, you have recourse in the court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor or city council. Please call the row.
Ms. Safford?
Here.
Mr. Lassio?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Him.
Mr. Noctree? Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Ms. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Uh, first up on the agenda would be the approval of the a minute minutes from, uh, the April fifteenth zoning board of appeals meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Next up on the agenda is citizens to be heard on agenda items. This section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding items listed on the agenda. Anyone speaking on an agenda item is entitled to speak for a maximum of four minutes. It's not a question and answer period, and staff in the zoning board of appeals does not generally respond to public comments. Please note speakers who engage in conduct interest to the harmony of the zoning board of appeals shall be called to order by the presiding officer and may forfeit the opportunity to speak. Is there anyone here, uh, wanting to speak on an agenda item? And just be aware that your this, your case will come up, the case will come up and you'll have an opportunity to speak then as well, so. But you can come up now if you'd like. Yes, mhm. Moving on to old, is there anybody else? I'm sorry. Nobody else. Did you want to speak now?
No.
Okay. Uh, old business public hearing, uh, is next up on the agenda. Uh, that, uh, twenty twenty-one nineteen, especially use permit for public truck CNG fueling station and private truck fleet CNG fueling and parking lot. That has been withdrawn. Moving on to new business and public hearing, uh, petition twenty twenty-one twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-one twenty-three and twenty twenty-one twenty-four. These are all similar requests, so there's one staff report, there should be three, uh, recommendations on this or, uh, votes on this. Um, and, uh, the applicant is BRT Outdoor LLC and they're formerly Impact Outdoor LLC. Uh, the owners and the locations of these sites for twenty twenty-one twenty-two, uh, that's L Steakhouse at nineteen ninety West Jefferson Street. And that's located at the southeast corner of West Jefferson Street and Haynes Avenue. Uh, twenty twenty-one twenty-three, uh, the owner is Silver Cross Hospital, uh, uh, of that property. And they're located at the southwest corner of Route Six and Walnut Street. Twenty twenty-one twenty-four, that is actually City Right Away. And that's located at the southwest corner of Theodore Street and Essington Road. And the requests are variations to allow electronic LED message centers at these three locations. Uh, the purpose, uh, the petitioner is requesting variations to allow full colored and animated electronic message centers for three proposed City of Joliet monument signs at different locations in the city. Zoning Board of Appeals will make the final decision on this matter. Uh, site specific information, uh, twenty twenty-one twenty-two at, uh, Jefferson Street, the L site. Um, that is zone B three general business and that is being proposed as one double face sign at, uh, six foot by twelve. Twenty twenty-one twenty-three at the southwest corner of Route Six and Walnut Street is zone R three, one and two family residential zoning. And that is one single face sign proposed at eight foot by sixteen foot. Twenty twenty-one twenty-four at the southwest corner of Theodore Street and Essington Road is zone R two, single family residential. That's one single face sign proposed at six foot by twelve. These cases were all filed April fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. Uh, surrounding zoning, land use and character, there's three mixed use areas that surround these, uh, locations of residential and commercial uses. Applicable regulations are signs. Land use committee meeting, uh, met on this way back in July of twenty thirteen and, and voted to recommend this agreement in a three to zero unanimous vote in favor. City council meeting, uh, the mayor and city council heard the proposal for these community signage at their meeting in twenty eleven and approved the contracts for twelve locations within the city uh, with a seven to zero unanimous vote in favor. Approval of a first amendment to the agreement was approved by the city council in May twenty fifteen. Under discussion, the petitioner wishes to construct two six by twelve foot and one eight by sixteen foot electronic message centers on six foot high stone monument bases with Joliet script within the, within the city. The three new locations are substitute locations for previously approved sites that were not utilized by the petitioner. The applicant still desires to construct, construct, construct twelve total signs as per the original agreement. To date, eight signs have been constructed. For proof, the signs will have eight total message slots, one every ten seconds. And the City of Joliet will maintain one slot for city messages at all times. The city will also control one slot on a, a space available scenario, which could be utilized for other community partners' messages. Under the above setup, the city will be allowed a message every eighty seconds that can be changed at any time. The city, in a sense, will have unlimited message capabilities every eight, eighty second rate or better if additional space is used, up to seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred per year. City message slots will be used for emergency announcements such as tornado, severe weather and amber alerts, as well as city marketing and event promotion. The other six to seven messages will be open for sold advertisement space by the petitioner as allowed by the approved agreement. The stone base will be constructed with similar block masonry to the existing city monuments and will receive landscaping around the base as per an approved plan. The proposed signage will remain outside of the vehicular traffic visibility triangle, will not create a nuisance to the area. The petitioner will be responsible for upkeep, maintenance of the sign and sign area. Staff believes that the request for the electronic message center should not interfere with track, traffic circulation nor alter the essential commercial character, residential character of the individual areas. And that concludes the staff report.
Petitioner up, I think he wants to put this off until the next meeting. Is that right?
Yes, Chairman Riggs, Gary Davidson Castle Law, two North Infantry Drive.
I just swear again first. Do you swear that your information is true?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, we've met with a couple of residents that reside at Theodore and Essington. Um, and they've, um, expressed some concerns regarding landscaping. So we want to make sure that we, uh, properly address, uh, all of those concerns or working cooperatively with them. Uh, revise our site plans so that, uh, the residents, uh, feel good about the sign. Uh, so we'd ask to continue the, uh, the hearing until next, uh, just for a month, I think we'll be in good shape where we can have, uh, unanimous support on this.
Okay, we've got a motion to continue it?
I make a motion to table.
Second. Go ahead and call the row.
Ms. Safford? Aye. Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So they will come back to the, uh, the June, uh, ZBA meeting.
Jim, do we need separate motions to table all three of them?
Um, I don't think to table. I think we're okay.
There, next, twenty twenty-one twenty-five?
The applicant is Thirteen FEG Haunted Prison LLC. The owner is State of Illinois Department of Corrections, sub, subleased through the City of Joliet. Location is four oh one Woodruff Road. Request is a special use permit. Under purpose, the applicant who is the contract tenant is requesting a special use permit to allow a year-round indoor and outdoor entertainment venue, including a haunted house. City council makes the final decision for this res, request upon recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. This petition was filed in April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Under site specific information, the subject site is located at the northeast corner of Collins Street and Woodruff Road. Includes the former Illinois State Penitentiary Women's Prison Complex and surrounding land. Proposed plans would utilize approximately fifteen acres of the hundred and sixty acres owned by the Illinois Department of Corrections on the east side of Collins Street. A map depicting property owned by the Illinois Department of Corrections is attached. Subject property is zone I two general industrial. Women's prison was built in eighteen ninety-six as the state's first prison for women and is of similar architectural style as the penit, penitentiary across the street. In nineteen twenties, the women's prison transitioned into an annex of the main penitentiary. Penitentiary, penitentiary was later renamed as a Joliet Correctional Center. State closed the main Joliet Correctional Center in two thousand and two. However, the women's prison stayed open until two, two thousand and six. The women's prison in general has not seen the level of deterioration that a main penitentiary building has experienced due to the facilities being newer. City of Joliet secured in December twenty seventeen a lease agreement with the Illinois Department of Corrections and Illinois Department of Central Management Services that provided the city with control, oversight and temporary usage of all facilities associated with the form of pen, penitentiary so that the city may provide security, maintenance, temporary and permanent improvements, as well as utilize of facilities in order to promote preservation, commercial and recreational uses. Surrounding zoning, land use and character, to the north is I two general industrial zoning. Former quarry of the Illinois State Penitentiary, um, Joliet Open Space owned by the Illinois Department of Corrections. To the south is also I two, and that is a scrapyard and contractor yard. To the east is I two, Illinois State Crime Lab and Open Space owned by the Illinois Department of Corrections. To the west is also I two, and that's the former, uh, State Penitentiary Joliet Complex. Under applicable regulation, section forty-seven thirteen point two A G, special uses for B three general business districts. Uh, section forty-seven five point two C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit, and you could see the attachment for that criteria. Under discussion, the petitioner Thirteenth Floor Entertainment Group is an entertainment company that offers seasonal haunted attractions and year-round entertainment events in select cities across the country. Comprehensive overview of the company's other projects and developments are available on their webpage at thirteenthfloor.com. The company entered into a sublease and development agreement with the City of Joliet in January of twenty twenty to operate a seasonal indoor/outdoor haunted attraction. Uh, the company now seeks a special use permit so it may move forward with its plans to redevelop the current structure and adjoining outdoor areas into a venue that will provide entertainment oriented activities. The Joliet zoning ordinance requires a special use permit for entertainment uses in the I two zoning district. Specifically, the company plans to operate a seasonal haunted house with indoor and outdoor attractions along with other year-round attractions, including the possibility of axe throwing, escape rooms and other similar style attractions for the purpose of public amusement. Detailed overview of the company's proposal can be found in the attached petition. Company's main attraction will be the creation of the Old Joliet Haunted Prison, which includes a multi-part exterior maze. And that's gold shaded on your site plan, leading to the interior attraction, which is blue shaded on your plan. All visitors and pedestrian traffic will be directed from the parking and drop-off areas to the ticketing entry area. Once visitors are properly ticketed and screened through security, they will enter the attraction through the container stack A and will be guided through the exterior, interior events. Floor plan details for the attraction are depicted on the site and floor plans. Attraction is ADA accessible. There's no minimum age limit, however, the attraction is not recommended for small children, pregnant women, people with asthma, epilepsy and or heart issues. On nights of operation, the company estimates that attendance would range from a thousand to five thousand people depending on peak, peak operating periods. Company anticipates opening its haunted house attraction to the public on, in September of twenty twenty-one and will run through November twenty twenty-one. The attraction will generally run from seven PM through midnight on days of operation. In addition, the seasonal haunted attraction, company will likely offer year-round attractions on the property on Fridays and Saturdays from eleven AM until nine or ten PM and may host various festival types of events. Staff has approved the proposed traffic circulation plan for the proposed use. And the attached site plans show the approved traffic routing from Collins Street and Woodruff Road. Staff is currently working with the company to address the condition of the proposed parking areas, circulation within the parking areas and lighting. City recommends that the parking area be level and safe to walk on. Company intends to install directional signage and employ staff to direct visitors where to park, where to buy tickets and where to get in line. Company has indicated that they are in the process of securing an agreement to use a parking lot associated with the Old Joliet Prison Complex at eleven twenty-five Collins Street, which is across Collins Street and southwest from the subject site. Company also intends to coordinate with the Joliet Police Department to ensure there are adequate security operations to protect the safety and welfare of each guest. When the facility is open to the public, a team of trained security staff will be on site at all times, staging in specific locations throughout the event, both inside and outside. On high volume nights, Joliet Police Officers will be on site to assist as needed. Company will require each guest in, entering the premises to pass through a security screening. Staff recommends that the special use permit approval include a condition that staff shall approve a final traffic, parking and circulation manager, management plan prior to the business's opening to the public. Traffic Parking and Circulation Management Plan shall detail measures such as, but not limited to, traffic control, parking, circulation, lighting and security measures for onsite and offsite parking lots. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve this special use permit, the following conditions would be included. One, that the business shall submit and the city shall approve a traffic, circulation and parking management plan prior to the business opening to the public. Under two, the, that the parking and circulation management plan shall be reevaluated by city six, staff six months from the date of ordinance approval. That's a special use granted herein may be revoked should the city determine that the provisions of the parking and circulation management plan have not been met. Three, that the business shall remedy any unsafe conditions arising from use of the parking areas and overall circulation of the site. Four, that the business shall manage ingress egress from the subject site to prevent excess gravel and mud from being tracked onto Collins Street and Woodruff Road. Five, that the business shall abate any condition that is contrary to local ordinance or the development agreement, agreement, including but not limited to noise, garbage and debris, traffic and property maintenance. Six, that a city business license be secured prior to opening. Seven, that the special use granted shall here and terminate unless a billing permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained not later than eighty days of the affected date of this ordinance. Any erection or alteration of a building is started or the use is commenced within such period. Eight, failure to comply with any of the above conditions should result in a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, is the petitioner present? I swear you's in force, are you both gonna speak?
Yes.
Okay, do you swear your statements are to be true?
Yes.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Anne Junior, address is two thirty West Huron, Chicago, six zero six five four.
Brian Cop, address is fifty fifty North River Road, Schiller Park, six zero one seven six.
Do you have any questions or comments for the board or agree with the report that he just read?
Uh, yes, we definitely agree with the report. I'd say some things have been refined since we submitted that. There have been a few more discussions about traffic circulation and the parking. If there are any specific questions about where the petitioner is at on that right now. And, um, just for the record, I'm the attorney for the, um, applicant. We, uh, I assisted with the application, so if there's any questions about the legal standards, I'm happy to answer those. Um, Brian wanted to tell the board more about the company to the extent in the operations, you were curious about what's actually going to be going in there this fall. Um, because it's very obviously dependent on the special use today. So just to give you an idea, that we do have a very brief PowerPoint presentation if you'd like to see that.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Thanks. So as I said, I'm Brian Cop, I'm a senior general manager with Thirteenth Floor Entertainment Group. Um, I have run haunted houses here in the area since twenty fifteen for the company. Currently, our home base is in Schiller Park, will be relocating Thirteenth Floor Chicago, it's previously in Melrose Park. But, um, as said in staff report, uh, we make haunted houses primarily. Uh, we make some of the most highly attended, high production value and safest haunted houses in the country. Um, and we also do year-round activities, social gaming like axe throwing, room escapes, uh, things of that nature. Usually they go hand in hand with our haunted houses, some of them are standalone locations. At this time, we have about twenty-five locations spread across fourteen markets nationwide. Fifteen of those are haunted houses. We're primarily a bunch of, uh, artists that are very passionate about Halloween horror, making fun, safe events for our customers, offering a place for people to, to get away, have an adventure, escape from the, from the day to day and go somewhere fun and exciting. Yeah. Uh, we started in two thousand and two, uh, just a few people making a haunted house in Denver. Um, and as I said, now in, in twenty twenty-one, we're gonna go up to twenty-five shows on fourteen markets. So that's an example of, uh, of one of our, um, our haunted houses, showing people getting ready to, to go into the attraction. And this shows an example of our locations nationwide, um, as well as some of our, uh, year-round activities and our new interactive theater event in LA called Delusion that we'll be doing as well. Our haunted houses, uh, at this time, we've had over five hundred thousand guests at our fifteen individual haunted house locations. So they're very highly attended and very well reviewed. We also have a more family-friendly event called Jack's Pumpkin Glow, where families can go on a trail and see uh, intricately carved pumpkins, thousands and thousands of pumpkins across a fun trail with interesting set pieces to, as a backdrop for the, for the jack-o'-lanterns. And then we also have an example, uh, here of our social games like the axe throwing and so forth. Uh, ultimately, we just are really excited to now bring this to Joliet to create a unique, exciting and safe haunted attraction for, uh, for this area. And if anybody has any questions regarding the safe plan, I'm happy to answer them.
Does the board have any questions? If not, is there anyone wishes to speak in favor of the petition? In favor of it? Okay. Again, I'd swear again. My hand, do you swear your statement is to be true?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record.
Of course, Amy Sanchez, sixteen oh two Stratford Court, Joliet, Illinois. And, um, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Collins Street Neighborhood Council where I'm a board member. Um, in absence of our board president, Tanya Arias, um, the city staff is to be commended. They did an awesome job with reaching out to us and communicating to us last year, pre-COVID, um, about the idea of the thirteenth floor and the, uh, concepts that they had. What stuck out to us the most that, um, they haven't talked about or they may can come up and mention is the nonprofit side or the, um, the ideas that they have for youth and children in schools. Um, we are in favor of this because they have reached out, because the city has reached out to the community. We do have, um, a couple of questions if they wouldn't mind answering, which I think is, um, still probably being, um, discussed with city staff about the potential traffic pattern and how, um, something this large, um, affecting residential areas in, um, throughout the community, um, because it's so close, because that is such a large number of, of, um, potential attendees. We would like that to be, um, not just, uh, answered in the, um, traffic pattern, um, to the city, but also to include the residents, not just in a neighborhood council, but possibly, um, at a, a public posting or something. But we do applaud the, uh, company for coming out and reaching out to the community, what they want to do. Um, the other final question that we have for the company is, do they plan on, um, petitioning for a liquor license? Um, and that would be our final question, but again, we are in favor of it. We thank them for considering the Joliet and the east side is specifically to invest in. Um, we think it's a great opportunity and, um, those just couple of tidbits of questions that we just wanted to answer. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? And if not, I'll close the petition. Is there any other questions from the board? And if not, we will call for a motion.
Um, I, I'm sorry, are you requesting to hear some of your questions about the traffic study? Is, or, you know, the traffic impact, was that? Did you, I, you know, did you have specific questions or you're just saying it was reviewed? I'm a little confused on that.
So we're asking that when the path, uh, traffic pattern is, um, considered, if they would reach out to the community to make sure the community is aware of what's, the traffic pattern is gonna be affecting the residents that live in that area? And then we also have the question is, does the company intend on asking for a liquor license as well?
Got it. You know, so, yeah, I do have a question though. Um, my question is because it is so close, right across the street from the, you know, the men's prison. Um, and it does say, you know, in, um, in the summary, it did indicate that there are gonna possibly be working with the Joliet Police Department to cover some of that. My question is, is with that many people coming in, is there a concern, you know, with the safety and people maybe going across the street and trying to break into that site? Cause you know, in the past, we have had, what was it, just a fire two years ago or, you know, um, trespassing and anything like that? And do we have the resources to cover that? Do we feel secure with that, um, as city staff?
Um, you know, we were more concerned with, um, the, uh, circulation of customers, you know, that would park over on the other side, you know, for overflow purposes than crossing Collins Street. So we have requested that, you know, um, on those nights when there is that many patrons, that J, Joliet Police Department be there. Um, and I believe they plan on working with Joliet Police Department as well on even slower nights, you know, to make sure there's some type of a police present, presence there. So, um, you know, there wouldn't be somebody necessarily within that other facility, but around it, I think, to monitor that situation.
Okay, and I'm sure that they have security cameras and stuff like that at this point. I don't know what the status is, I have not visited the prison, I don't know, I know it was very unsafe.
Yeah.
But I don't, you know.
I have not heard that it's not secured anymore. I believe it's pretty secured and, and the only way in is through, I think, the entrance off of Collins Street these days.
Okay.
Jim, I had a couple, I did talk to the museum director today and, um, the president of the museum board. Um, and they don't have any concerns about security at this point in time. Um, their only concern at this point in time, which is still being worked out, um, per the condition of the staff report is about, um, circulation and the use of the parking area at the main prison for, um, themselves at this point in time. But they don't, they do not express any concerns about the security of the main prison and it has not come up also with staff either.
Awesome.
And I know the applicant was gonna comment on the liquor.
So to answer that question, yes, um, once everything is set, that would kind of be part of the licensing process. And I know there's a separate review process for that, which would give the community an opportunity to come out and express concerns and we can adequately address those at that time, but that is certainly part of the plan. Um, and as far as the, the safety factors there too, the, I can say that these events are very well staffed. well-staffed. And there's only a handful of nights really during the peak season. It's, you know, the closer you get to Halloween, the more people want to go to these. But they're very manageable crowds. They do this in several cities, and they've really learned the rhythms on how they need to adequately staff this. Because their goal is one hundred percent to provide a very safe and fun experience for anybody coming. And anything that's not safe really detracts from that. So they will go, they will very, they will work hand in hand with the city to make sure there's comfortable level throughout the seasonal event.
Okay, I guess we'll close it then. Any other questions from the board? If not, motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Next up on the agenda is petition number twenty twenty-one twenty-seven. The applicant is C One Truck Service LLC and owner is C One Real Investments LLC. Location is one seventy-five McDonald Avenue, and they requested a special use permit. The purpose of the petition is requesting approval of a special use permit to allow a truck terminal that includes truck service and repair, truck wash facility, commercial truck sales, rental and leasing, truck and trailer parking, and office space. As per the applicable zoning code, section forty-seven point one four point three D, all industrial districts, carting, express, hauling establishments may be allowed as special uses by the mayor and city council with the advice of the zoning board of appeals in accordance with section forty-seven five point two. Under site-specific information, the four point four five acre site is currently zoned I one light industrial district. The site is improved with a nine thousand three hundred square foot precast building that was previously used by a greenscape landscape company. The site improvements contain an existing asphalt parking lot in an onsite signage. The petitioner recently purchased the property and moved their operation into the building, not knowing that they needed a special use permit for their use. Work was also started on the site without building permits, but that, that has ceased. This case was filed on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Surrounding zoning, land use and character, to the north is office use with I one zoning, to the south is industrial with I one zoning, to the east is a commercial use with I one zoning, to the west is a residential use with R four zoning. Under applicable regulations, section forty-seven fourteen point two A D, special uses all industrial districts, forty-seven five point two C, special uses criterion for approval, and you could see the attached petition for that criteria. Discussion, the petitioner, C One Truck Service, is a Chicago-area operated, operator that recently located at the subject site. They're a full-service truck terminal that includes service and repair, truck wash, truck sales, truck rental and leasing, truck and trailer parking, office and logistic uses. C One is proposing to renovate the existing building for additional service bays and a truck wash tunnel, and you could see the attached site plan for this information. A ten thousand square foot addition is proposed to the rear of the building. Thirty-two truck-trailer parking spaces are being proposed to the undeveloped area on the site to the north of the building. The addition of these spaces will require the need of the petitioner to pay the annual payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot fee. In addition, requirements for paved parking areas with concrete barrier curbing, full landscaping to current code, concrete curb cut aprons, ComEd streetlights, storm detention and onsite lighting will be required as part of a future building permit. Under conditions, zoning, if the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit, the following conditions would be included. One, that a business license be applied for and approved in order to, to stay open. Two, that the petitioner pays the annual payment in lieu of taxes fee. That a building permit be applied for, that, that paved parking areas with concrete barrier curbing, full landscaping to current code, concrete curb cut aprons, ComEd streetlights, storm detention and onsite lighting. The building addition comply with the city's non-residential design standards. That the special use granted herein shall terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained no later than three hundred sixty-five days. Six, failure to comply with any of the above conditions could result in a rehearing and possible revocation of a special use permit. And last, seven, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. And that concludes our staff report.
Is a petitioner present? I swear again, do you swear your statements to be true?
I do.
Your name and address for the record?
Nathaniel Washburn, one eleven North Ottawa Street in Joliet.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments from the board?
Uh, no, no questions at this time. We'd just like to reiterate that we support staff's report on this and that we're here to answer any questions that the board might have, and we would respectfully request approval of our request.
Board have any questions? If not, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone opposing the petition? If not, I'll close the petition and look for a motion from the board.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Go ahead and call the secretary, go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
So that will go to the second city council meeting in June with a recommendation of Under, next petition is twenty twenty-one twenty-eight. The applicant is Ketone Acquisitions LLC, the owner is Ketone Acquisitions LLC. Location is thirty-one hundred Shanahan Road, and this requested a special use permit. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit in order to allow a tire repair and sales center for Cassidy Tire. As per the applicable zoning ordinance, section forty-seven point one four point three, under prohibited industrial uses, B three uses are prohibited except as special uses in an I two district when authorized by two-thirds majority vote of mayor and city council and subject to same conditions specified in forty-seven dash fourteen point three three. Site-specific information, the twenty-four acre subject site is located on lot three in the Ketone Business Center subdivision, unit two, which was approved in June twenty eighteen. Special use permit was approved by the city council in May twenty nineteen and allowed a truck and travel fueling center on the subject site. This petition was filed on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Under surrounding zoning, land use and character, to the north is industrial I two, to the south is the Des Plaines River, and that's also I two, to the east is industrial I two and, and west industrial I two. Applicable regulations, section forty-seven seventeen point one four point three, prohibited uses industrial districts, B three uses, section forty-seven dash five point two C, criteria for issuance of special use permit, and you could see the attached criteria. Under discussion, the approval of the requested special use permit would allow the development of the subject site with a nineteen thousand square foot tire service center for Cassidy Tire. Cassidy Tire will lease and operate the future precast constructed building. Cassidy Tire is a fourth-generation, family-owned tire sales and service company that has been in business for over a century, century. According to documents submitted by the petitioner, and you could see attached, it is the Chicagoland area's largest independent tire dealer. The lot three subject site fronts along Route six and shares an access drive with other lots within the park, and you could see the attached site plan. Seven truck parking spaces and ten service bays are being proposed. Public improvements required by Joliet Public Works and Utilities Department will be adhered to in addition to the site meeting, city landscaping requirements, non-residential design standards, paying water and sewer connection fees, and the development impact fee. Services that the Cassidy Tire operation will provide will include the sale, repair and replacement of tires and wheels to both commercial and passenger vehicles. In addition, Cassidy Tire will perform vehicle alignment services. Should be known, the previously approved truck and travel fueling center will still be constructed and leased to a future unknown user as an adjacent compatible use on the same lot. Ketone Acquisitions will maintain ownership of the entire property. The tire center is anticipated to, to be completed and occupied in January of twenty twenty-two. Truck and travel fueling center is expected to start construction around the same timeframe, but not open until after the Humboldt Road Bridge extension is complete. Under conditions, the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit, following the conditions would be included. That, one, that a business license be applied for and granted by the operator prior to the opening. Two, failure to comply with any of the above conditions could result in a rehearing and a possible revocation of a special use permit. And three, should the plot, property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. That concludes the staff report.
Is a petitioner present?
Good afternoon. Thomas River, one eleven North Ottawa Street, Joliet, Illinois. I'm the attorney for the petitioner. I sort of tell the truth, the whole truth.
Okay.
With me today are Kyle Schumacher of Ketone and Brian Ahern of Cassidy to answer any questions. We've been here before on special use for the travel center. We think this use is very compatible and will be good for the city and good for the area, so we would request your approval. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Do you have any questions or comments for the board yourself?
I do not, thank you.
Does the board have any? If not, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone opposing it? Easy one today. And I'll close the petition. Is there any other questions that might be available for the board? And if not, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve? Call the roll.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
And that will go to the second meeting, city council meeting in June with the recommendation for approval. Next petition, number twenty twenty-one twenty-nine. The applicant is Pastor Dan Johnson. The owner is Hima Gandhi. The location is ninety-two Barney Drive, requests is a special exception. Under purpose, the petitioner, the pastor of Restoration Christian Church, is requesting a special exception for a temporary mobile unit to be located at the rear of the property at ninety-two Barney Drive to provide additional classroom space under COVID-nineteen social distancing guidelines. Zoning Board of Appeals makes a final decision on the temporary use request. Under site-specific information, the subject property is thirty-six thousand seven hundred square feet in size and is zoned B three, general business. Property has a six thousand two hundred square foot multi-tenant retail building. Restoration Christian Church currently leases the entire building. Church has a shared agreement with Alexander Lumber to utilize their parking lot on church gathering days for parking. This case was filed on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Under surrounding zoning, land use and character, to the north is Alexander Lumber Retail Business, and that's zone B three, general business. To the south is White Fen's Farm and Marshaloni Carryout Food Restaurants and City of Joliet Pump House, B three, general business. To the east is single-family residential, R two zoning. To the west is Alexander Lumber, Lumber Yard, and that's I one zoning. Applicable regulations, section forty-seven nineteen point six, functions and powers of the zoning board of appeals under special exceptions. In addition to permitting these special exceptions heretofore specified in this chapter, the board shall have authority to permit the following. Temporary use of a building or premises in any district for a purpose of use that does not conform to the regulations prescribed by this chapter, provided that such use be of a true temporary nature and does not involve the erection of substantial buildings. Such permit shall be granted in the form of a temporary and revocable permit for not more than a twelve-month period, subject to such conditions as will safeguard the public health, safety, convenience and general welfare. Under discussion, the Restoration Christian Church seeks approval to allow a temporary modular unit on the paved area at the rear of the property behind the multi-tenant building so that the church can properly socially distance adults and children during Sunday and weekday programs. Church is in the process of building a larger facility in Shorewood. Pastor estimates that the new church will be completed in seven to nine months. The modular unit will include a restroom and two to three classroom spaces. If approved, the temporary modular unit will be utilized until the new church is finished. Use of this modular unit shall not, not exceed a one-year time period. Under condition, if the zoning board desires to approve this special exception, the following condition would be included, that the temporary modular unit shall be removed within one-year timeframe from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And that concludes our staff report.
Is a petitioner present? Do you swear your statement to be true?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Julius Caesar. Address is two two three nine four Woodland Lane in Frankfurt, Illinois.
Do you have any questions or comments for the board?
I have no questions.
Does the board have any questions? If not, is there any?
I have one. Sorry, I always jump in right at the end. Just a question, the follow-up, at a year, do we go out and validate that this is, like, we keep track of this? Is there some sort of, what department does that, or we make sure?
That's right. It would be mostly planning, probably that would have to remember to go out and have like a ticker in our file or something to remind us. But, you know, it seemed to be that they were building the new church and this was just get them by until that time period. But we'll, we'll monitor that planning and zoning well.
Excellent. Thank you. That's my only question.
And then, just the way that's written, it, it seems like, you know, if, it didn't say after a year you have to come back for a special use permit, it just says nothing past a year. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, they would have to come back if they wanted to.
I suppose so. That would be the alternative if they'd have to come back and ask for a whole separate request.
But the way it's written is after a year.
Yeah. We've, we try to be straight that we would not support any additional time period after one year.
And y'all are probably excited to get into your new building, right? Yeah, I imagine.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here to speak with opposition to the petition? And if not, I will close and look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval? Please call the roll.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
And that motion is final. Moving on to the agenda, under seven, old new business, not for final action or recommendation, and we have none. Number eight, under public comments, this section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding non-agenda items and are allowed a maximum of four minutes. It's not a question and answer period, and staff in the zoning board of appeals does not generally respond to public comments. Please note speakers who engage in conduct in interest to the harmony of the zoning board of appeals shall be called to order by the presiding officer and may forfeit the opportunity to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak under public, public comments? No, doesn't appear to be. So with that, we can move on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is adjourned.